I'd like to call to order the Charter Township Oxford Board of Trustees, Planning Commission, and ZBA special meeting today is Thursday, March 22, 2018. The time is 6 o'clock. Please pay respects to the flag.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the purest of all.
I'm going to note the role for the township board.
Noted.
Note.
Role for planning commission? Noted.
And the role for zoning board of appeals?
Noted.
Let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there any questions? What did we want for the township board?
On behalf of the township board, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We need one from the planning.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of the joint planning commission meeting of March 22, 2018. Support.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to ZBA.
On behalf of the zoning board of appeals, I make a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting tonight, Thursday, March 22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A little short there. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment on items not on the agenda. I'm going to try to make this three minutes. If you go over three minutes a little bit, I don't care. But I don't want to go into 10 and 20 minutes, so try to keep it succinct, please. Comments on items not on the agenda? Is there any comments? Saying none. Unfinished business, none. Move on to the master plan. What I'm going to do is turn this over to our master plan expert. You want to do it from your chair? We can do it.
I'm going to be up at the podium, just it's easy for me to scroll through the slides. I have a PowerPoint presentation up there.
Okay. You've got the floor.
Thank you. So I just want to introduce myself to those who don't know. My name is Matt Lahnertstetter. I'm the township planner. We have been working with the planning commission to put together this master plan update. Just want to load up a little PowerPoint presentation. Now, Mr. Supervisor, there's a couple ways in terms of public comment. I have some slides in here that are dedicated to questions from the boards. It might be best to wait for public comment to the end of the presentation. But for the board's sake, I do have some time in between slides that we can address your questions.
Okay. That'll be fine.
Okay.
Does the public realize that? Everybody know that? We're going to try to get board and comment, and then I promise everybody get a chance to speak. Not a problem. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, thanks. So, just to start off, a master plan is a policy written and adopted by the planning commission. In some townships, it's adopted by the township board. But it's really a guide for development for the township, at least 20 years into the future. So the plans typically are based on existing resources and assets, as well as some limitations of the community. And then it gets into kind of a needs and desires gap assessment, talking about where the township wants to be in the future. So the master plan is a guide to addressing and fulfilling those gaps. And per the Michigan zoning enabling acts, the zoning ordinances of townships have to be based upon a plan. So the master plan is the de-document that the zoning ordinance should be based upon, especially with the future land use map that we'll get into a little later. Master plans, per the planning enabling act, have to be reviewed every five years. It's up to the township. It's up to the municipality whether you want to re-adopt the existing master plan or update it. In this case, the township has elected to update it and review it. So we're a little behind, actually. The last one was updated in 2011. So we started this in 2016. Unfortunately, it's taken just a little bit longer than we anticipated. I just want to go through the major list of things that were updated, the items that were updated as part of this master plan update. We have new census information from 2010, as well as SEMCOG information. So we've updated socioeconomic trends. We have new SEMCOG information about transportation and existing land use. We took a new public survey. So all of those combines, the new trends, the public survey, the new data. We updated the goals and objectives of the master plan, as well as the strategies. Created some new guiding factors for the land use plan, as well as updating the future land use plan based on those guiding factors. And then finally, updated the zoning plan and some potential zoning adjustments that could be made to make sure that the zoning ordinance is consistent with the master plan. So to start off, we did a public survey, an online public survey through Survey Monkey that was live from March to May of last year. In total, we had 353 total responses, 65% of which were Oxford Township residents, 17 and a half were Oxford, the Village of Oxford residents, and remaining were primarily from other surrounding communities. Some key trends, and you do, the planning commission, township board, and ZBA should have this in their packets. They should have a summary, as well as the full survey results. But some key trends that we noticed were that the respondents wanted to encourage redevelopment rather than new greenfield development. So where there were existing places that could accommodate development rather than tearing down some more trees. 45% indicated that there was already enough residential development. However, 30% indicated that, you know, if we're going to allow more residential, it should be primarily larger lot rather than dense developments. 33% desire more local retail and services. Similar 37% want some more sit-down restaurants within the community. While 30% say we've had enough with the commercial. Another question from the survey were to list the most desirable features, as well as the least desirable features of the township. Most desirable feature included just general friendliness, the access to open spaces and parks and recreation facilities, the general rural character of the township, as well as similar proximity to lakes and other recreational facilities. Least desirable features included traffic, which I think is pretty common throughout all of southeast Michigan, inadequate road maintenance, again, very common, as well as just unplanned residential and commercial growth and development. So that's a key one at the end there because that's the point of the master plan, making sure that we can have coordinated growth within the township and manage growth. So this is just the table of contents from the master plan introduction, background studies, goals, objectives, land use plan, and finally, the zoning and implementation plan. So the first, the introductory chapter is just an overview of the master plan, kind of an extension of what I said earlier. What is the master plan? What's the process? As well as just basic information on the township, its location within southeast Michigan. There's a nice map in there, which of course I have not included for some reason. Second chapter, background studies, this gets into the socioeconomic trends, the growth and development trends, transportation, you know, just the existing data that we have, where the township currently is. So within the chapter, there are a bunch of graphics, tables, charts. But I just included this, sorry, this growth population trend table, which shows how Oxford Township's population growth compares with surrounding communities, as well as Oakland County as a whole. So Oxford Township being at the top has grown 37% population-wise from 2000 to 2010, which is, I believe, the highest of all adjacent communities and higher than Oakland County as a whole. So we've had some significant growth over the last 10 years. This table also includes a forecast by SEMCOG up to 2040, which anticipates approximately 20,000 people, 19,000 people within the township compared to 17,000 where we were in 2010. Also, a table on housing unit trends, similar, about a 38% growth in the number of housing units between 2000 and 2010. Again, it's one of the higher communities within our area and much higher than Oakland County as a whole, which was at 7.2% in their housing unit growth. Some other types of type of data that we included in the chapter, which just for the sake of time, I didn't include here, but we have data on household size, age trends, age comparisons, housing owner occupancy data, as well as employment data. Some other maps and data that we included in the background studies chapter included natural features. This map is primarily the same as the last master plan. We use the same data set for this map. Includes wetlands, tree, large tree stands, as well as significant natural features identified by the county. We have a transportation, two transportation and traffic maps. This is the county road classification, but we also have the national road classification as well. This is, again, the same as the last master plan. This data hasn't changed. This map, which includes community facilities and services, including schools, township-owned land, parks, as well as any state-owned land within the township, and also trails, regional trails like the Pollyann Trail. Water and sewer districts, which was provided, this map was provided to us by the township engineer. Green in this map are areas where water and sewer are both provided. Blue are water facilities, water utilities, and the orange are areas where only sewer is located. And this map, I might actually come back to it because this was one of the key maps we used to develop the urban service areas, which is new to this master plan. And I'm going to get into that a bit later. Here's an important one as well, existing land use. This is information that we had from both the previous master plan, as well as some new data from the county. And a vacant and transitional land use. Now, the point of, the purpose of this map, and each of these, each of those red areas has a number. There's another chart in the master plan which correlates to the number. But these are areas that are currently vacant or have the potential to be redeveloped. So we wanted to identify them, include their acreage, which is in the table, just as a way to say, you know, this, we shouldn't be surprised if someone, if a developer is looking at one of these properties because there are quite a few areas in the township which, whether they're excavation sites or just vacant sites, which have the potential to be redeveloped. So right now, I'll open up the questions about the first chapter. Any questions or comments on the first chapter from boards?
Boards, please go. Boards?
The only thing I would say is on page 35, you discuss the senior citizens program, and they've got it still at the Bens Memorial Citizen Center.
Okay.
And I would make a change there.
Sure. And also, I encourage you, please, if you have some, for this, the purpose of this meeting, I would like to try to keep it at a larger scale. But if you have comments like that, please email me.
Okay.
Yeah, the smaller changes, please email me. I'll make those changes quickly. But I'd like to focus, if we can, on the larger scale issues that are in the plan. But yeah, it's good. Typos, I'm sure, knowing me, there are quite a few. So feel free to email me corrections in that regard.
Curtis Schula.
Yeah.
On page nine, he talks about three sub-area plans that were adopted. What are those sub-area plans?
The sub-area plans, and I can, I can maybe provide more detail on this. But we had, there's the East Central Area Plan, the Central Area Plan, and the M24 Corridor Plan, which I believe two of them were adopted in the 90s and one of them in 2001. So Central Area Plan, East Central Area Plan, and M24 Corridor Plan. Any other comments for this first section?
I'm not sure if we discussed this at the PC, when this survey came out, but do you feel that the amount of participation with the survey makes it valid to use as?
Well, I think that, you know, I'm not going to get into statistical analysis, but I think that any public comment is valid.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying the, was it 3% of the total? Was it 1.3%?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the time. I have, I mean, it was only about 300, it was 350 residents. But I certainly don't want to discredit their comments.
Oh, no, no, no. What I'm just saying is that make it a valid enough survey to give us some kind of idea where we need to go?
Yeah, I would say, I would say so. I wouldn't say that it's, again, not statistically T-test and all this kind of jargony, but I don't think we have the right to say that it shouldn't guide our decision. So, yeah. I mean, I think that public input in any form is important and take that for what it's worth.
Other questions? Move on.
Okay.
Yes, excuse me. How was the 300 you got? Were you Nick or Matt? What'd you name?
I'm Matt.
Matt. I'm Tom Johnson.
Hi, Tom.
Tom, I'm going to ask you, because we have a TV camera here, to please come up.
If you don't, oh, if you want, yeah, if you want to, we have a TV camera.
Since you've already started, we want to hold off.
State your name for the record, and I'd be happy to answer your question.
Tom Johnson. And I have a pretty quick question. So you have 300. How were those 300 chosen randomly?
Oh, no, this was, so the, it's a good question. The survey was open to, it was posted on the township website. Anybody could have, anybody who clicked on the link could have taken it, yeah.
And how does that, the results of that survey, in terms of it being inclusive, how many were in the township itself and how many were in the outer perimeter?
Yeah, so for, you know, in terms of where in the township they responded from, we just, we don't have that data. But 65% were township residents, 17 and a half percent were from the village. And then the remainder were from surrounding communities. Yeah. Yeah. And just, no, it's like for future, just I'd ask that, please, wait till the end of the presentation for public comment. I just want to get the board's comment right now, but we will open it up to the public afterwards. Okay. Thank you. And so the next second, or the third chapter, titled Goals, Objectives, and Strategies. And this is a very important chapter because it outlines three different types of policies or statements. There's goals, which are very broad statements for the development of the township. There are objectives, which expand upon the goals. And then there are strategies, which are action-oriented statements, you know, implementation. How do we make these objectives and goals happen? This master plan has a total of eight categories, and I'm going to go through each of these one by one. First goal is community character. The, there's one goal for this category, and that's that development, redevelopment activity should make a positive contribution to the community, preserving, enhancing special characteristics of the township while promoting a balanced approach to land use that is responsible to both demographic and economic factors. So some of the objectives, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go in through the strategies because there are a lot of strategies that can be used to achieve these objectives. But we had several objectives to achieve this goal, including preserving rural character in outline areas, especially in the northeast, northwest portions of the township. And then closer to the village, preserving and adding to the character of the village, promoting an attractive appearance along our township's major corridor, M24, promoting compatibility between adjacent land uses, especially where there are existing land uses that might not be compatible with other, you know, residential uses. And then urban service areas. So I'm going to, later on, talk about these urban service areas. Moving on, we have a goal about residential land use that we should allow for a variety of different densities and different types of residential development in the township, including traditional village-type development, resort style around the lakes, as well as more rural and other northeastern, northwestern portions of the township. And the objectives carry on that goal. With regard to commercial land use, the goal that we should meet the needs of the township residents while promoting a design that is unique to Oxford. So we want to, around the township, around the village, we want to allow for land uses that are compatible but don't take away from downtown, the downtown Oxford area. Focusing major commercial and office along M24 with, but not prohibiting other types of smaller neighborhood-oriented retail in other parts of the township. Promoting in certain areas, a mix of uses, commercial and residential, especially near the village, as well as encouraging attractive streetscape design, especially along M24. With industrial development, the main point here is to make sure that we're allowing industrial development, but we're not impacting adjacent land uses, especially residential. So that where there are areas of current, where industrial is currently located, that we're promoting some buffering and screening. And where new, where new industry is coming, that we, from the get-go, say you have to, you have to be compatible with your adjacent land uses. And you have to have noise reduction techniques and landscaping and screening. We also want to encourage green building design, energy efficiency. Again, on the mixed land uses, this is, this was mentioned in the last master plan, but we expanded upon it, that in certain areas of the township, mixtures of uses may be appropriate. You know, the old style of zoning is that every zoning district has its own list of uses. Here, we're saying, you know, some uses might be, might actually be compatible and that we should look to be more flexible with what types of mixtures of uses that we can allow. And this is brought up in the future land use plan as well. Around the village, we're looking at establishing a village mixed use, which allows residential, commercial, and compatible office uses. And then we're also looking at a potential mixed-use light industrial district, which allows for related office, commercial, and industrial. I'll get into that a little bit later. Natural resources and environment, this is pretty consistent with the last plan. Township still strives to preserve natural areas and preserve open space in new developments and protect natural features. This master plan, we did add just renewable energy as another objective. Open space and greenways, this is consistent with the last one as well. Last master plan encouraged pedestrian connectivity and greenways and open spaces anywhere we can. You know, the township residents in the survey indicated that open space and natural resources were very important, so that should be a goal of the township. As well as establishing, combining pedestrian connectivity with greenways. We have the Pollyann Trail. It's an opportunity to make it connect to some commercial uses as well. Transportation, because of the township, you know, the roads aren't solely under our jurisdiction, but we can still have a goal to coordinate with RCOC and MDOT to improve the road network where we can.
How are we going to do that?
We're going to meet with them.
Because of the land features here, we have lakes, we've got everything in the way. We're pretty much stuck with what we got, so we got to, we got to plan accordingly. There's not a lot we can do with our roads.
Yeah, and I didn't mean for that to say that we're going to build new roads. But, you know, we have the LaPierre Road Improvement Project, an opportunity for the township to be involved in the planning of that.
But the problem is, if you build it, they come. You know, you can spend, you know, $5 million, $10 million dollars on a road network, and within a year, it's filled up. Now, what are you going to do more? Do more? So I think we have to plan for what we have now and not expect a lot of improvement. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, it's fair. And I mean, it's just, when RCOC and MDOT have these projects planned out, I, we can use the master plan as an opportunity to coordinate with them in discussions. Yeah, it's, again, we have what we have, but we also want to communicate with them because they have their own projects as well.
I agree.
And then safety paths, that's another important one. We have a safety path priority network, making sure that when developments come in, that we emphasize that safety paths need to be developed. We want to have a continuous pedestrian pathway. And that goes into this other goal for transportation, to allow for comfortable routes for walking by slowing public transportation. Brought up in the public survey, that that's a very good feature of this township. We should, we should strive to improve that. And then the last goal category are utilities. And this ties into the urban service areas, but also that if a developer comes here, we should make sure that they know that we don't want our taxpayers having to pay for large improvements. And a lot of these should be born by the developer, including water and sewer improvements. So questions on that chapter?
You brought up industrial. I have a problem with industrial. I don't want to see industrial without water and sewer. It's a bad idea. I don't know where we put any more industrial, so I think we can pretty much throw that out. We can't take water and, or excuse me, water, especially sewer up the M24 corridor to handle what we have now. I can't see, because of our purchase capacity. So I, I don't think we're going to be able to do anything with industrial. At least I won't do anything with industrial.
Okay. Yeah.
Whether people agree or disagree, it's just, what these industries put out in our porous sand or soil, I just think it's a bad idea to look for more industrial. The other questions from?
Well, I noticed that they discuss parking in the rear of commercial properties as continuation of the village look. And I believe that's been in there since 1995. And yet, we won't even talk about Meyer Store, but we'll talk about Tim Hortons, the new Chase, the newly owned Coney Island that's going in at TSC. They all, since if we're not going to follow our own master plan, maybe that portion should be removed. Maybe we shouldn't be doing that, even have that in there.
Well, that's a discussion, I mean, from a planning perspective, it should, it should be in there. I mean, from my, at least from my perspective, you know, it's, it's very design-oriented, making sure that the impression that when people are driving through the township, the impression isn't just cars.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, again, it's an implement.
That's part of this original.
Yeah, it's an implementation issue. If it's, if it's an important goal for this township, then the next step is to update the zoning ordinance. So, I mean, it's, it's the township's call, but from a planning perspective, I think removing that would be acting, going back in time and touching upon bad planning practices.
Okay.
Yeah, Jim?
Come on, I just had a quick, in the residential section, you mentioned something about architectural standards. I mean, to my knowledge, we don't have any. Obviously, you kind of leave it up to the developer. Unless it's a PUD and we have a little bit of control, we really don't have any architectural standards. I don't know if that's something that any of these boards would want to challenge. Everybody's idea of architecture and what looks aesthetically pleasing is different, so it's difficult to do that. I just noticed that you put that in.
And the, the major intent of that was not really to apply to the township as a whole, but more for the village mixed-use area, where if we are going to have this mixed-use area, design should be an important aspect of that. So if you have a townhouse-style development in that mixed-use district, then the township may want to consider adopting some design guidelines just for that specific area. The intent was not, you know, not for rural areas to have architectural restrictions, only for the major areas along M24 by, near the village.
And I would agree with Matt, you know, and Mr. Dunn, too. We don't have a lot of control over MDOT and the road commission. But we did get some improvements because MDOT reached out to us when they came through with the M24 project. And we were able to get some, some of our ideas implemented based on some of the master plan from before. So it helped out definitely.
Yeah. In mixed land use, you talked about promoting green technology, green building technology. Could there be like an incentive township could offer these people to implement some of those technologies? Because while 10 years ago, there was a big push for solar energy, we put on an energy conversion device.
Yeah.
On the ordinance itself, so could there be something that could be incentivized for reduced building permit if they're going to use?
Absolutely. That's, it's a common technique as to, it's called incentive zoning. A lot of planning and development standards have that. And we have the foundation for that in the plan unit development, where we have density bonuses. So that can be incorporated into other areas of the ordinance. And if they meet certain criteria, you know, lead building design, then there could be some zoning waivers that could be granted.
Is there a way we could take a look at that now?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, that's something that the ordinance review subcommittee could, if the township wants, could.
Because I would like to see the green. Because I would like to see the green initiative, but I don't want it mandated, so-
Yeah, and that's incentivizing where it's not mandated, but it's-
Correct, let's try to encourage that type of development.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, and we have the ordinance review section after this, so that's something we can bring up there. Okay, any other questions on the goals chapter?
I have one more. I don't want to be taking all the questions, but the village character keeps coming up. Could somebody tell me what the village character is? With a, with a movie theater, it looks like it's the 22nd century, some yellow restaurants, and I mean, a mishmash. Could anybody tell me what village character is, or what, what it is?
It's, it's implying a traditional type of development, but there's a... The master plan also wants to encourage flexibility with architecture. So it's, goes back to the parking in front. You know, that could be, in a downtown area, you're not gonna want parking in front of your building. So when you think of a village character, think more of a, a walkable environment.
Not just the facade, so-
Not the facade's part of it, but it goes deeper than that, you know. Where, where people who are walking are gonna access the building, making sure that your parking lot is not the most prominent feature of your development.
Walkability type stuff?
Yes, exactly. So that could be something we, we, I touch, I provide more detail on because it certainly goes past just the architectural part of it.
Okay, good, that's a good answer.
Thank you.
One thing that I've seen, that I've noticed too, is that implementation is a problem. We've seen that with different things, like the character of the village continuing on and the way we develop subdivisions with what our master plan says. Sometimes the implementation aspect isn't there. The plan might be great, but if the plan lacks an effective visualization and definition of what it is, it's hard for people who weren't there at the time to recreate and continue it on. And that's what I've seen, you know, from being on the commission for 20 years. I know what it said when we did it, and trying to be consistent is the problem. I guess where I'm going with this is if we had better definitions and visualization of what it is in that plan, it's easier to follow it. And I've seen other master plans that spell it out more clearly. Like, we use general terms, like we want to do our, preserve our rural character. What's the definition of rural? If nobody knows, then nobody agrees to it, and we don't have a baseline. That changes over time. But if it's concrete, we have a density calculation for a specific illustration of what rural looks like, so that an old rural density doesn't go over X, where these characters are maintained, you know, that helps. And also like what the village character looks like. What does it look like? How would the plan look? I know in our future, I think, but in looking at other plans and stuff, do you find that being more descriptive and more concrete with these types of things helps the implementation of the plan? That's the one thing I feel our finances, the team, of how to get it done. We have these great goals, but we don't really know what they mean.
Yeah. So to answer your question, yeah, have, have you seen more, you know, vision, pictures help? Give you an idea of, and that's something, I'm going to be adding pictures to the plan. There's a lot of blank space here now, but that, there's an area there where we could, you know, for village character, throughout the plan, we have these little blue boxes at the bottom, which provide additional information. That could be an area where we, we provide some pictures and break down what we mean by village character. So that's something that I think we can, we can change from the plan if we want to be more detailed there. But no, I, I agree that broad fluffy terms, if they're too vague, they don't really mean anything.
Right, but when I ask the township, what, what's the density of rural? And that's kind of where we're making decisions based on the remaining tenure of character and the plan comes across us. We should have better, a foundation on what that is. That, that certainly is really helpful. We talked about this-
Yeah, do something in here.
We talked about the subplans, or not subplans, but more detail. I know we're always limited with what we can do with time, but I think some things warrant more discussion, like the character of the village flows, you know, from the village to the township. And doing studies that would add to this master plan, that we could spend some time, some focus groups. In my case, I'd like to see the hot country kind of put off in a plan that people can, you know, look and vision to and say, this is what's special about it, we have this here, and it can be integrated in the plan. We have to redo the plan all the time to take a better focus in these subplans. I know we talked about it, I was wondering, would that be a helpful way to, to do this? Where we could just pick a priority of something and really just go at it in detail?
Yeah, and that's, and township initiative there, subarea planning, I think is very important, but we do need to get a work plan and funding in place. But I think as a part of the subarea planning process, that focus groups are important, especially with the people that, the residents that live in that, those subareas.
Any other questions? Continue, Matt.
Thank you. All right, now we get into, oh, lost connection there. We get into the, one of the most important aspects of the, the master plan, which is the, the land use plan, especially the future land use map. So this, the chapter is laid out into, starts off with the guiding factors, the factors that we use to develop the future land use map. Then we get into the future land use map itself, and then future roads and rights of way plan, and the safety path and greenway plan. So we, we have eight guiding factors. Some of these were mentioned in the last master plan, some are new. I'm not gonna go into all of these, but I'm gonna touch upon urban service areas, which ties into, ties into the maintenance of the outlying agricultural areas as well as reclamation of extractive sites. So new to this plan are the urban service areas, which, here's, here's a map of, of them to give you an idea. We have two urban service areas. One is green, the primary urban service area, and the orange is a secondary. So what these represent are areas where, that are either currently served by public utilities, being sewer and water, and are locate, primarily located within the, the existing sanitary sewer district. And then the secondary service area are potential areas for expansion. Areas where we see, or where at least they're planned, where utility expansion could happen in the near future. And this is important because areas outside of these colors, the white areas, are primarily intended to remain residential and rural in nature. They don't have access, and they're not planned to have access to these water and sewer utilities. So their density should be much lower, and the uses should correspond with that. So this is a, this is a technique that's commonly used to, as a starting point or as the main, the main factor for the land use plan. Uses inside, uses and densities inside these areas are gonna be a little bit higher because they have, they can tie into the utility systems. And uses outside of it should remain more rural in nature. And then the second point of the guiding factor I want to tie, touch upon are the reclamation of extraction sites. There is a map, unfortunately, it's, and the master plan is laid out vertically, so you couldn't see it in this PowerPoint, but in the map, we highlight these seven existing extractive sites. We mentioned where they are currently in their, in their mining procedure, process, whether they're almost done being mined, or they're already mined, or they just started. And these are, these areas are important to touch upon because of reclamation plans. As a requirement, they have to reclaim, they have to reclaim their sites and make it really buildable. And these could be potential areas where future residential development could happen, especially because there are a lot of manmade lakes in these areas. So those guiding factors, especially the, the urban service areas, create, help lead to this future land use map. And the, the major changes from the last master, we, we went through, as a planning commission, we went through some areas with, especially those vacant transitional land use sites that we touched upon earlier. We looked at their previous future land use designations to see if they were still appropriate. And some areas we changed, some areas we left the same. But on this future land use map, we have, I don't know if you can see it on there, but we've incorporated the, the urban service boundary in that black line. And we have these two, at the top, there's a letter, and at the very bottom, at Hills of Oxford, at the golf course, there's a letter. These represent alternative future land uses. We understand that these are privately owned recreational sites, and sometimes a privately owned recreational property owner wants to sell it. So we want to make sure that if they're sold, that we have an alternate future land use designation. Right now, they're planned for private recreational, but it may not always be a golf course. So these areas, we've looked at the surrounding land uses determined. In the case that it's sold, an appropriate zoning designation would be at the top, would be rural, because it's outside of the urban service area. And for A at the bottom, it might be appropriate to be a little bit denser because it's along M24, in very close proximity to the urban service area. So we're just, we're planning ahead here and making sure that we have appropriate future land use designations. We also have the mixed use areas here, which is new to this master plan. Around the north, north and south of the Village of Oxford, along M24, we have the village mixed use area, which includes a mixed residential, commercial, office, a flexible list of uses. That may be an area where we have those design standards, where parking should be in the side in the rear, and it should be screened and be an attractive drive through, through Lupier Road there. And then the, the mixed industrial, which is the pink area, right at the top of the urban service area, where we recognize that we, we don't want that to be heavy commercial. So some lighter, some office uses, some ancillary commercial uses might be appropriate there to make sure that there's a good transition between the residential land uses around it. So within this second chapter, we also have future roads and rights of way plan. This was carried over from the last master plan. It talks about potential, potential road connections. Again, it's up to the, the county, and there may not be the, the intent to ever develop them, but some areas that were developed previously in previous master planning efforts about connecting certain roads to one another. And we also have a safety path, open space, and greenway plan, which goes into safety path extensions, the Pollyant Trail, green infrastructure, and touches upon promoting green space and open spaces within new developments. So here's the, the greenway plan has a safety path, safety path network, Pollyant Trail on there, as well as future, potential future expansions of that, those networks. So there's no question thing here, but right now, I'll take questions about this, this chapter.
Matt, how many of these are coming in?
Yeah.
Did we get your report on this?
I'll have it here, sir. I have to have it come up here because of the TV channel. Don't be sorry, just-
I'm wondering, squinting back here, but is it possible to get the complete report?
Yeah, this mess, yeah, so we-
Those folks in the audience?
Yeah, we certainly want to make this accessible to the public. So once the planning commission reviews the changes that we make now, I, we're gonna put it online. We're gonna put it online, available, distributed to surrounding communities. Everyone should have the, the opportunity to comment on it. So this will be made available for the public, for public review, yeah.
When will that happen?
It will happen once the, really, I mean, it could happen if the planning, if the township wants, they can put it on now, it's up to them. But after the planning commission and township board actually approves it for distribution, for comments to, from adjacent communities, which is required by the state, that's when it should be officially made available for public comment as well, for them to write in any concerns or questions they have about it.
Okay, so my question is, when will that happen? Excuse me?
We're gonna, we're gonna try to wait till the end of the presentation, yes.
Anybody who wants to talk, please raise your hand. I promise I'll let you speak. I'm up here. Okay, okay. And did you want to hold off the residents' questions?
I, I, you know, it's up, it's, it's ultimately up to you, but just for the sake of grabbing the township board's comments first, because this is, might be the first time you've seen it, and then opening up to the public after the presentation.
Promise I'll get out to the public.
There's only one more section of this, so it's, it's pretty, coming up shortly.
Chris?
Yeah, the future roads and waterway plan, is there a consideration of putting the connector road from M24 at Menetown over to Glaspy? Is that still a consideration?
That's a village, that's gonna be a village, I mean?
I can just briefly tie, can, it has seven potential extensions. We have Thomas Road extension, Hummer Lake Road extension, M24 to Oxford, Ray to Lakeville, two Ray to Lakeville roads, extension of Bar Road, and then extension of West Lake near Waterstone. So I, I don't see anything about Glaspy though, not within this plan.
The, the road will be in the village, it would, the, the improvement would be paid for by the village because they own the roads. So again, it'd be a total, we have made, we have made easements available for a road that goes through there, when, I forget the name of that place.
Church and Magnetics?
Yes, the Magnetics. We allowed for easement to be put in there for that connector road.
It's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that they plan on doing that, but they just don't have the funding right now.
I'm sure. Any other questions, sir? Go ahead, Matt.
So this, the last chapter, okay, is the zoning and implementation plan. And this is, as Kelly had mentioned, this is an important section, because, chapter, because we don't want this to sit on the shelf and collect dust. We want to implement these goals and objectives. So this ties, the main point here is to tie the, the master plan, the future land use plan, the goals and objectives, to our main enforcement, implementation technique, which is zoning. And it's actually required by the Planning Enabling Act that we relate the future land use map to the zoning map. So we provided a, a table here, which shows, and this is, there's more to the table, I just couldn't fit it in the, the presentation, but shows how the future land use categories relate to the current zoning districts, and also identifies where there are gaps. So for example, the mixed use, we don't have a mixed use zoning district right now. We need to identify that as an area to look at so that we can bring the zoning ordinance, bring it into consistency with the future land use map. And the zoning plan also identifies some innovative techniques as a way to achieve the goals of the master plan, including planning and developments, which we, we currently have, but there's always room for improvement. Overlay zoning, density transfers, and conditional rezoning, which again, we, we do have in, in the current zoning ordinance. And then the zoning adjustment sections takes the gaps where, where our current zoning ordinance just doesn't have the text or the provisions to accomplish the goals of the master plan. So for example, multiple family density, at the planning commission level, we had a long conversation about maybe having two zoning districts for multiple family with varying densities, so that it's not a one district fits all type thing. And their, their, small, lighter densities are more appropriate outside of major corridors and areas along M24 should, and within the urban service area should potentially be higher density. We talk about the village mixed use and the industrial, commercial, mixed use district, as well as some potential PUD adjustments to make, make our planning and development option a little, add more teeth. Make sure that they truly do have public benefits, that we're not allowing developers to take advantage of the township. As well as just a formatting issue from the zoning ordinance, making it more user friendly and organizing land uses in the zoning ordinance in a chart format, so that a developer or property owner can just take a look at the chart, take a look at the use they want, scroll across to see if it's allowed in the district that they're in. And we also touch upon subarea planning, identifying certain areas of the township, such as the village, uh, village mixed use area, the farm, hot country, areas where it may be appropriate to go into further detail and develop some subarea master plans, which only focus on those, those areas of the township. So I'll take questions on that last chapter, and then I want to go into the- So, I'll take questions on that last chapter and then I want to go into the next steps and then we can open up the, the public comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, what I hoped for tonight was that we could talk about any major modifications to the plan. Again, the smaller details, the text, the inconsistencies with page numbers, just please email me and we'll make those corrections. But after we incorporate any major modifications that we discussed tonight, the Planning Commission will look at the fi, the final amended draft and if they're comfortable with it, make a recommendation to the Township Board for distribution. The Township Board will then have to, if they're comfortable with it, at least 95% comfortable with it, doesn't have to be perfect, we can still make changes to it. But the Township Board will have to approve distribution to surrounding communities, will have to submit it to the county, as well as any public, submit to MDOT, any agencies that have a say in our township for their comment. And they will have 63 days to, to write us back with any comments they have on the master plan or any suggested changes. After the 63 day period, the Planning Commission will look at those, look at those suggested changes, you know, and this is an opportunity during that 63 days, public comment is certainly welcome as well. After the 63 days is over, the Planning Commission will relook at the master plan to see if any of these changes should be incorporated. They'll make those changes if necessary and then I'll have to check. Some townships, in some townships, the Planning Commission can make the final motion to adopt the master plan. Some townships have, the Township Board has elected to be that body. So, I'm not sure in Oxford Township how you did it with the last master plan, but either the Planning Commission or the Township Board will then make the final adoption of the master plan. So, those are, that's where we, we are now and we're, we're going to go in the next couple of months here. So, any questions from you and then I think, public comment.
You go out to the public?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm going to go right behind you.
I got my answer right there. Thank you.
Did you? Okay, come on.
I'll, I'll step back up here.
Yeah, fine, you can, you can answer from back there.
Hi, Bruce Myers, Kellin Road, Oxford. I kind of heard a little bit about, Kelly brought it up, about how do we define some of these things. I never once heard the word horse up here. And there's that whole quadrant up there of the township that's kind of considered a horse country. So, can we consider something like adding horse trails to the greenways and the, the safety pass? Because those amount to safety paths in that area to get the horses off the roads, make it safer for everybody. So, I wonder if we can consider that. One of the things I'm kind of wondering about is when you're talking about the reclamation of the pits and so forth, what do we have for a build-out plan? Does anybody here really know what density that we're already approved for and what can happen in this township? Just from my, uh, brief calculations on my own, it looks like we can already have a tremendous density and we're working towards that already with all the build-out. So, can we do something like put a dent in the master plan that includes the build-out plan to see what we're looking at in the near future? In the northwest area, the horse country as I'm going to call it now, there's a lot of property that's for sale. And right now, it's almost at a crisis level because with this property being for sale, you could have anybody come in from compost yards to stockyards to you name it, universities, colleges, all kinds of different things. And we don't have a way of defining what is the approved use up there. I imagine that Matt was referring that this is something that's going to be addressed in the near future, but this is something that needs to be addressed now. Right now, I'm watching some of the ordinance review committee and all that, where it would come up for basically defining the, the zoning for that area, what their approved uses for. And then all of a sudden, I'm seeing it pop down the list because how many trees in front of a house is being discussed or the solar is being discussed. But once this property is sold, it's going to be a problem because if, if a developer wants to go in there now and put something that is not consistent with the community, it appears that they can do that. And that, that's scary because once you lose that land up there, it's gone. And you're going to lose a lot of the, the residents that have properties up there and want to keep it in terms of horse farms or different recreations like that and the trails. So, we need to preserve the trails. On the same note, what's happening too is if we do get sued by a developer, because if we come up and try to stop it afterwards, that, that's looking for a, a fight, a problem. We don't have a whole lot to fight with because basically, Planning Commission and I imagine the Board also has to address any leeway action through their minutes. The minutes must be complete. It's my understanding that developers can use the videotapes and so forth, but we as a township, or you as the representatives of, of the township can't. So, if the minutes are being incomplete, I think we're setting ourselves up for a failure. So, that puts even more emphasis on coming up with approved uses now before things do change. There's literally hundreds of acres for sale up in that area. This is a critical time for that. I'll come back at a later time. Thank you.
Anyone else out in the audience? Larry Rosenner, I live at 1830 Cobblestone Lane, Oxford, Michigan. And you'll have to bear with me a little bit, but now I'd like to start, we, we said 20 years. Well, here is the 2005 plan, July. This is only 13 years old. And when we look at this plan and look at where we are today, it's pretty easy to see why our population growth has been astronomical, higher than anyone else. It's, uh, it's very understandable because, you know, the current plan, we're not following necessarily. And when I look at this plan, it's like back to ancient days, it was never followed. When someone wanted something, it went around, and Dr. Myers brought up, what seems to happen, we fold up, we give in. So, that's reality. We're talking about 20 years. If we're going to talk about 20 years, we have to take and have a plan that really stands up, not that it changes. And from my opinion, and just my opinion, but I've got a right to say it, most of the time, I had a disagreement when some of these areas where populations increased. Since I've lived here, I had a disagreement with the Township Supervisor, with our Township Clerk, who's also on the planning board, and wasn't followed. So, it can't be up to the residents here to sit and argue, because when I went around to try to get people with this meeting, and I said this, you can go back and look at the October 12, 2017 meeting, and it's on public, you can get it, Oxford Public, I mean, we fight a battle. Then, some people, you know, their feelings get hurt. And when I go around to try to get, I tried, I went to quite a few houses, I get a standard answer, the people that live here out in that quarter, not in the residential area, not Waterstone, they give me one answer, I don't want to waste my time. The Board does what it wants to do. And certainly, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the existing, you know, Planning Commission because most of you are new. You can't go back and change what happened over the years, but it's happened. You know, I've listed six areas and I'll make sure that there's a copy available, so that I can go into minutes of the meeting. But we need to have these six areas certainly, you know, as help for putting the new plan in place, because we can't expect one person to know everything. And there's, there's, you know, good input, I think, you know. You know, will this plan prevent more waterstones in apartments, these developments in our, you know, they're under our current master plan. Where were they? They weren't there. What is rural? You know, you have urban, which I don't think the majority of the residents that live in this township want to be categorized as urban. In other words, high density. You know, what does it mean to preserve the, the hunt country? How will the plan protect the horse area, the rural area? You know, there, there's difference. And unless it's in the plan and incorporated in it, it just won't happen. And it certainly can't be changed once it's, when it's out, it's out, it's gone, it's We, you know, what is, there's, what does the Planning Commission keep disregarding? Why? Why are we disregarding the rural area? That's, that's really, I think, why the people move here, want to live here. The houses on Cobblestone, you know, when they go up for sale, they sell that fast because the people want to be there. You know, maybe it's time for the township to use some of its fund to create a real plan to preserve the unique esque aquarium, history of Oxford and create a real plan that clearly identifies protective boundaries, visions, property, trails and so forth, because we've got the opportunity to certainly make that quadrant of the township unique. It's there. Take a look at where Oxford has gone over the last 20 years. The growth numbers are in our master plan, they are not even current. We, we increased the population, growing faster than the other communities. You know, do we, what's different? Do we want to look like Orion, Taylor, Pontiac? You know, maybe it's time for the township to use some of its fund to create a real plan to preserve the unique history and, and future of Oxford and create a plan that clearly identifies protective boundaries, vision, preservation, preservation priorities, trail networks and other tools that will create an area that is truly unique and beneficial to the entire community. Take a look at where the Oxford has gone over the past 20 years. It's, it's really in the plan and I, I fully support, you know, a new plan with the tools that's available to the Planning Commission to make decisions and be able to stick with them and not run into legal, other ramifications while, while we have to do it. Now, as, as an example of rezoning criteria, going back to the meeting that I referred to earlier, that October 12th, I stood in front of the group and said, we need to get that done. I look, I put a copy back there, it's not done. What is done, we have a plan, we, we spent enough time, so we want to know how many trees we put along the subdivisions. That's more critical than getting the plan done? I don't think so. We've spent time doing things that are not really protective of, certainly that quadrant. You know, I think it's important for, yes, we have something where if we're doing a subdivision, we need to make sure we count how many feet between trees, but that's not what this is You know, I think we've spent, and I, I think most of the people don't realize it, but you know, Oakland County has the Action Committee and the One Stop Ready Programs going, we're, we're participating in those. So, if we can participate in those, we certainly should be able to take and get the criteria for rezoning and put it in and put some teeth into it. One of the, one of the areas, just as an example, the Hunt Club, it's gone. What happened? There's a lot of people that weren't very happy that are residents, but it's, it's gone, at least it went through all of this. Why? How did it happen? Now, and roads, if anyone would be ashamed of sitting, drive down Oxford Road, the one mile tar going between Ray Road and Gardner, there's holes in it that, it's, it's really pretty bad. That's, that's really all I have to say, other than, you know, any support that we can give in developing the new plan, you know, I, I think we need to support getting it done and move on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I do have one other request. In the past, when I've made some presentations or talked, I, it could be, one time it was 15 minutes and it resulted in one paragraph in the minutes. So, I've put down what, what I basically said and I'd like, can I approach and give this?
I would, I would approach and give it to the clerk, he's in charge of the minutes, right here, sir? Right here.
Oh, that's, that's it, I signed it. I'd like to have to add some minutes. That's what I said, so it doesn't have to be improper.
Any other public comment on this? Come on up, man. Say your name, please.
Hi, my name is Jenny Benson. I live in Barber in the township. And I want to agree with a couple of the things that have already been said tonight about horse country. Of course, that's my livelihood and I've lived here for over 30 years. And I've seen a lot of changes in the township that have really, really been shocking, even little things like you brought up with the, the movie theater, the way it looks in town. I don't know how stuff like this happens. I lived for a while in a little town in Colorado that was so strict on its building that, that every building had to be approved by the look of it and they even designated what colors you could paint buildings in the, in the, in the town, just to maintain the look and the feel of the little town that we lived in. And I think something like that, especially for a downtown area, should be maintained, not, not even especially, but also there as well as the hunt country. And I know that a lot of people that aren't familiar with the hunt country, don't really think that it's as important to the area as it is. It, it cracks me up on the Oxford Community Forum to hear people talking and half of them are from Waterstone or from one of the little suburbs, have never been to the outlying areas. Didn't you realize that where I live is part of Oxford? They thought we were a different, you know, different township or a different county even. And I don't think that a lot of people realize how much money the horse industry brings into our area. People coming in and, and just meeting at restaurants after they ride or having, you know, buying, buying vehicles in the area, buying equipment from other people in the area, buying tack, of course, at the tack store in town, one of the, about three, three businesses downtown. three businesses downtown that I've seen stay here, that have been here the whole time I've been here. Pharmacy, and the bar, and, you know, the tech shop, right?
All the important ones.
The important ones. But to maintain the hunt country, I've noticed in the master plans, I think there's been three of them since I've lived here, done, and they all say, "Keep the hunt country preserved. It's a jewel to, you know, take care of it." But nobody really says exactly what that means. Right now, as I've said, a lot of uses could happen out there that are not compatible with what we are and what we try to promote for that area. I think, I don't know where the, where the proper place to, to say what should be allowed is. If it's here now, or is there going to be another time to talk about businesses, or, you know, what should be allowed in the area? You tell me, is there a better time?
Are you asking the, I would ask the supervisor, and then he could-
Okay.
-directly, and then he could-
Is there a better time to talk about exactly what should be allowed?
You can comment on it right now. I would like to digest a lot of this, so I'm not going to do a lot of commenting tonight.
Okay.
I appreciate the horse country up there. I love it. I've been up there a lot. And I think this board is aware of the horse country, too. But if you've got some specifics, if you would like to even write them down, do you have a, do you have a lot, a big speech, if you've just got a few minutes?
No, I'm trying to make it brief.
If you're going to make it brief, have it.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I won't talk about specifics, except allowing businesses or industries in our area that increase our traffic to the area is, is going to be really difficult because of the horse industry. Especially in the summertime, but even this time of year, people ride on the roads. We have a very unique area that most landowners allow horseback riders to go through their property. Some people don't. And there are some areas we can't get to without going on the roads, and it's becoming more and more dangerous up there. Oakwood Road is absolutely horrendous. People go 50 miles an hour past you on motorcycles, and, and it's, it's, can be deadly to everybody involved, not just-
Well, the problem is, it's allowed.
Wow.
55 on those roads, I would never go there.
It's, it's, it's hard, you know? So if we could have better areas to ride, or better pathways for dangerous areas especially, that would be terrific. And the big one, again, is not allowing business and industries to the area that, that are not compatible, either by increasing density, or traffic, or the look, or the feel of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir, in the back.
Evening. My name is Jeremy Jarrett, 1890 Cobblestone Lane. My story's a little bit different, but it kind of encompasses the whole thing. I have some opinions to share. I recently moved, bought six acres over on Cobblestone Lane and built a new house. We just moved in around Christmas time. I was born in Oxford on Washington Street, actually, in the 70s, we'll say. And lived there for the first few years of my life, but I've spent a good portion of the rest of my life in the Romeo area, and dealt with a few issues over there that I think are relevant to a few comments that were made. But from a history, my parents, my great, our grandparents and great-grandparents all graduated from Oxford schools, so my family goes a long way back. I just haven't been a part of this township in a little while. I'm fortunate enough to live a few doors down from Larry, so I got dragged into the township business really quick. He cares a lot, and for good reason. I'm here to support a lot of the things he spoke about, but I'd like to just summarize him and get my opinion on the record as well as, honestly, when it comes to horse country, I don't ride horses, I don't mind horses, it's not really my thing, but I love rural. It's why I moved to Cobblestone Lane on a five-acre minimum SF2 plot of land. That's adjacent to about 120 acres that just went up for sale behind us. Like Larry, that makes me nervous, where that could end up. If a subdivision moved in behind there, even though right now our plan shows it as 20-acre agricultural, if that wasn't followed through with, or it turned into something substantially different, it's a large investment, and personal amount of time I put into my home would be wasted and probably ruined. Could, not saying it will, that's worst case scenario, ruin what I just did moving in here, you know what I mean? I took almost two years to build a house, and did a lot of it myself, and that would be devastating to me, and I think to the township as a whole. So the, the property that just went up for sale, I mean, honestly encompasses, I don't know if everybody's been up there, but, and I don't know who owns it all, I'd love to know, but there's got to be a thousand non-continuous acres that just went up for sale, helping horse country, as people call it, and it makes me nervous. I have friends that own property that are planning to build up on Oakwood, and had lived there in the past, and it makes them nervous. I mean, to summarize what Larry's issue, or with the master plan is, we had a master plan, and it wasn't stuck to, in the past. And I see that, I've looked at the existing master plan, and I see what's there, and it wasn't stuck to that well. Now, granted, most of that issues occurred in the area surrounding the immediate village, and hasn't quite spread into rural country yet. But that's what's next, that's all that's left. So, I mean, I see that the pits around the expansion for future high-density areas, well, everybody's got to grow, everybody's got to be realistic, but if all we have is a plan that's not legally binding agreement, or part of the township ordinance is, it doesn't mean anything. It means we sat at the bar and had a conversation about what would be nice, and that was what we agreed on. If it's not followed up by anything real and legally substantial, it, it was a waste of time. And I think that's Larry's biggest complaint, and a lot of people I've talked to in my area as well. I really want to just summarize what he said, back up a few things, but just to also, I hear a lot about the horse country. Most of the friends I have don't really care about horses, but what we do care about is having a quiet place to raise our kids, letting them run around, having great neighbors like Larry, who don't care if they crawl through their backyard and climb up the trees, and play in the cornfield out back, you know what I mean? That's why people want to live in rural country, not because people, I just moved from downtown Romeo on a postage stamp-sized house, and I'll tell you, I didn't want to live in Romeo, because I moved from there. And I will say one thing that was mentioned when it came to controlling the color of the houses, and what you can and can't do. Getting too specific is a hard thing to do as well. Romeo tried to force historic ordinance on non-historic houses at one point, and wanted to tell people that if they had a house with aluminum siding on it, they couldn't change it to vinyl without getting that approved. Well, that caused a lot of problems, and didn't happen, but there is a downside to getting too specific as well, but things need to be defined and basically backed up with legal ordinances, basically, and not just talk. I don't have a lot of history with the zoning board in Oxford. I don't have a lot of history with any of you. I've been through a few rounds with a different, few different places. I can tell everybody's intent seems to be honest and sincere up here. I hope that it is. But I also just wanted to double down on Larry's concern, and a few other people's concern, that there's nothing keeping somebody with money from coming in and telling us what they're going to do with it. And everybody in this room that thinks they have power doesn't really have power if we don't put it into law, so that's all. I appreciate your time. That's my story.
Welcome back to Oxford.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Troy Uswalk. I live at 3100 Delano Road, and I'm a semi-truck driver. I have traveled the length and breadth of the nation. I've seen everything, from the richest areas to the poorest slums. What you have in Oxford is, I can count on my hand how many areas are like this, where you have rural mixed in with small commercial and mid, mid-sized density housing, where you have people from all walks of life, from people so rich they can fly their helicopter down to old caloways and eat with people who just came out from the friggin' car plant. If, when you talk about the spirit of Oxford, that's what it is. It's this idea that this place can be such a great area that everyone wants to live in it and coexist, no matter what. Like, Oxford's one of the only areas I know where if I leave my car unlocked somewhere, I won't have to worry about it getting stolen, even if the keys are inside it. There are shops out in horse country that operate on an honor system. No one mans it just to stop it. You can walk in and take whatever you want, it's up to you to pay for it. Nowhere else has that. It's very rare. So when you're talking about your blends and stuff, sorry, that is what the spirit of it is. That's what you want to maintain. Because if you get rid of that, if that goes away, all the people that live in that horse country area will leave, and they'll never come back. And all the revenue that you've had is going to take a severe dip because of that, because they pay insane amount of taxes on their property.
I would say yes.
Yeah. See? You want to maintain that, because once it's gone, like I said, it never comes back. You make that a subdivision, you want to go back, what are you going to do? Tear down all the buildings and roads and landscape it back into pasture? This is your, like, one opportunity, is what I mean. There is no on-do button. That, it's like, Oxford would be a place, I've lived here all my life, I'd like to continue to do so. It's so rare, like, honestly, no, seriously. Nowhere else is like this, besides like three others, and the other one's still in Michigan. You want to keep this, don't squander it. It'll never come back, but that's what I can say.
Yes, come on up.
Hi, I'm Susan Johnson. I too live on Cobblestone. I've had property up here for over 40 years. And I think I can speak for some of the residents on the lane that one of our big concerns is, in fact, the zoning. With all the properties for sale up here, right now it's zoned ag. Where we're at is suburban farm. One of my biggest concerns, I was a horse owner, I no longer have horses, but I'm very concerned that we are considered sometimes a point of least resistance. We went through, I was here when we fought the dump. The dump, the dump was going to be where Mulberry Hills Golf Course is, for those of you who weren't here at that time, which was absolutely ridiculous. Also, we went up against the ORV Park, which was going to be by the gravel pits on Ray Road. I too am concerned about safety, not only just for the horses, but people move out here, they move from Oxford Lakes out to Cobblestone. They move from places where the population is dense. We want to maintain the rural atmosphere where we are at, like Jeremy said about having your children be able to play, walk down the road, and not have to worry as much about having all the speeding cars. If that area out there was to have dense housing, the roads could never handle it. They would never handle it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This little Bruce Myers, Delano Road, Oxford. One of the things I picked up here kind of triggered a few memories that I've been hearing lately, and that is, a lot of people didn't show up because they wonder, "Why bother?" And unfortunately, that's a poor attitude to have, but I think as a board and planning commission and zoning board if they're here, needs to kind of bridge that gap a little bit. We've had master plans that were not followed. It's almost like you had to do it just to satisfy the government requirements, and, you know, you kind of put it in place, but you didn't follow them. I would really like to see a commitment of working on approved uses and zoning and so forth for the northeast quadrant, and really kind of committing, making the master plan such that it's something that you can commit to. Yes, there can be changes and extenuating circumstances, let's put it that way, but not just anybody who asks. Right now, again, I'm going to say, that area is open for all kinds of uses, and there's so much property for sale now, it's almost like we need to lock that down. If I can encourage you to really put the approved uses on, lock it in place so that it will preserve it. Again, consider the horse trails. We have a long Oakwood dedicated and donated an area of land as a horse, horse path to the, to the county. So that's going to preserve that forever. I would like to see encouraging that throughout more of that area, just to preserve the horse country. So that even if there are certain areas that get uses that are not the best, in my opinion, and hopefully a lot of other people's opinion, that at least you still have the trails in place that you can get through there and get around there. Because we're losing too much of the ability to, to really travel and use that, use that the way it is. As Troy said, I think there's only two other areas in the country, and they have really blossomed because of preservation of their horse country. That became their focal point, and they do a great job. And I'd like to see us do that here, too. I kind of touched on before, too, that right now, without the defined uses, approved uses, that developer can come in and put a lot of things here. They can challenge the township, and it's unfair, but they can. And unfortunately, since we don't have the approved uses, and they have a great legal case, and for their reason, I would also like to see a beefing up of all the minutes and agendas, because I can't find a lot of things online. I even had to FOIA minutes and agendas a few months back, and I actually ended up having the, your township attorney had to give a legal opinion, it's like, "Yeah, give it to me," because there was going to be a large charge with that. Those need to be put onto the website, maybe a little bit faster, and that's why somebody was asking before about when this master plan proposal is going to be on the website. It's like, I'd like to see that on there soon, just to, you know, maybe come up with some ideas or things that might, might tweak it a little bit. But we need to develop that trust that the master plan is going to work, and, you know, I'd like to see you all commit that you will really put a lot into it, not just that we're meeting state requirements, but really stand behind it. This is the opportunity to do it, because that northeast area is, they had a crisis mode right now. Thank you.
Anyone else? And we'll move on to ordinance review committee amendment list. What would the board like to do? The list is in the back of your packet there, very back, I think. Does anybody see any problem with that list? This list here.
Would you like me to just briefly overview?
Please do.
Okay. So this list, the chart, the table here represent ordinance, ordinance amendments that the ordinance review committee already has, and what has already been approved by the township board to review. These are all, these all have approval from the township board for the ROC to proceed. But I wanted to bring up just some additional considerations for the township board, planning commission and the zoning board appeals, just from an administration standpoint, as the zoning administrator that I have been having to, to deal with over the last year or so. One of them, and it touches upon what a lot of the residents have been talking about, but it's bigger than that, it's just a review of the uses and zoning ordinance. Our definition, first of all, our definitions in some areas are inadequate. We have, in some places, we don't have certain uses defined. So I think a, a review, and it's, it's going to have to be extensive, just because it is a review of a lot of different uses in both the ag SF district, but also commercial, reviewing these uses, making sure that they're still relevant. We still, you know, unfortunately, just the way zoning ordinances work, a lot of these uses are carried over from the 60s and 70s. Maybe we can redefine them or get rid of some of them, but also adding definitions so that we're not in a state of limbo, whether a certain use comes in, whether it meets the definition. We will have something in the ordinance that states it right up front. Another issue, and this is a little bit more detailed or a little less intense, but reviewing the language for accessory building, accessory building sizes and floor areas, there's a little bit of a discrepancy between attached versus detached accessory buildings, and whether or not they can be the same size as the principal structure, or less, it's just a little ambiguous right now, so revisiting that. And that's, it comes up a lot just from administration, because most of administration is dealing with, or not dealing with, but processing garage applications. So that's something that just comes up quite a bit from my standpoint, that I would like to have the ability to look at. But the biggest one, again, is making sure we have proper definitions, making sure that some uses in ag, but in all, all districts, because it applies, this is a township that has a bunch of different zoning districts, making sure that the uses are still applicable there, and that will be a little bit more intensive.
Ned, I'm going to put you on the spot here.
Okay, let's go for it.
If the board, can you give an, an appropriate motion? If the board, can you give an appropriate motion that you would like to see or if the board has no questions, they might want to make a motion?
Well, if this is with regards to, you know, the township board approving the list of items for the RRC to look at, I don't know how you've done it in the past, I just unfortunately haven't been there that long.
We've just made a motion to allow them to take the time and expend the money for necessarily an attorney to look at it because we do need to have it look at. So it would be a pro of moving forward with this list as presented.
At least from, from by zoning perspective, these are the most pressing issues, so I think that would be an appropriate motion.
Moved by Margie? Is there support?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Curtis.
I have a question.
Yes.
Number one, we have no ordinance for outside dining and that's been brought up several times here where the village has outside dining, special land use, so any establishment in the township can have outside dining without approval. And that's not always a good fit when it becomes noise close proximity to homes.
So are you saying you'd like to add this to this list?
It was brought to our attention that it should be added to this.
Would you like to have-
Mr. Supervisor, I think that, I think that there should be, there should be some reserve, I believe, for the RRCs for some minor modifications. I think that there are some minor modifications that don't, that may not need to go to the township board for approval, such as these lists of these missing uses or these uses that it's a simple to strike them out of the ordinance-
Okay.
-where it's, it's not a major change. But yeah, there are, there are plethora of types of uses that I wish we had some provisions for in the ordinance so that from an administration standpoint and for the property owner and developer standpoint, they can just look at the ordinance, see if it's allowed. They know what, they know what standards they have to meet.
Nothing radical?
No, no.
Just basic, plain up?
I think any radical change, I think, should have to come from the township board for their approval, but for some small little just strike through and underline things, I don't know.
Curtis? Yes, could you repeat the motion? Could you, it was too unuttered to help.
Do you want me to help you?
Margie, flip.
I think the motion is basically to continue with the ordinance review list created by Carlisle Wardman, starting with groups one, two, and three as presented.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
It's my second.
And including outside dining.
Including outside dining.
Include the review of outside dining.
Next time, raise your hand, gentlemen.
Sorry.
It's been moved and re-supported, yes.
We seconded the motions, but anyway, there are prosthesis, this list shows so many hours remaining, is that the authorized hours that is allocated to each review?
Correct.
I think the motion adopted on the sheet, so that has everything included in it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do you have more questions?
Just, these are zoning ordinance amendments, wouldn't the township board have to approve those zoning orders?
They have to bring them back to the township.
That's ours for consideration. This authorizes the work.
Can I, can I ask just a clarification on the motion? Is, does the motion include, we have these, these bullet points below that were the items that were not originally approved? I'm wondering if the motion incorporates these or is basically approving the RRC to look at these items?
Yeah, it's, it's basically adopting your sheet that you have here.
And then the table, that's already been reviewed by the township board, that has already been approved. The bullet, the bullet points below are where the changes that I think should be added to the list at some point.
Like Joe said, the entire sheet.
Entire sheet, okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, yes.
Is there, this is directed toward Mr. Hornerstetter, is there a timeframe that you feel these would be ready?
I don't have, again, it depends on the, the extents of the, of the task. I think, you know, outdoor dining, that's a very, that's a quick change, but an overall review of the zoning, the uses in the district and the, making sure that we have definitions, is just gonna have to be a little bit longer. We wanna, we wanna try to do it all at once, but there are times where we may have to do it a little bit piecemeal, you know, incorporate a round of definitions, come to you and then we'll, we'll start in the next round. It's, I really can't answer that right up front right now.
Will you, will you take these in the order of groups? One being the first, you'll, you'll address them, two then three, or will you mix those up?
Most of one's done.
That was the intent was to, the intent was to split up the groups by their projected time that it would take. You know, group one up here were very, were simple changes, group two were a little bit more packing, group three would take quite a long time. So the intent would be to do the same thing with these remaining ones and I could organize another list for you if you want to weigh down the motion, but that's the intent.
Okay, we're gonna do a motion that's already been done and supported. Roll call.
Supervisors done.
Yes.
Court right, yes. Frasier Ferrari, yes. Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Dirk?
Yes.
And Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Is there any public comment? Board com, or township board comment? Is there any from the township board? Yes.
Other interest in the House of Providence, for 2018, they're not tax exempt, they've not provided the information, so they'll remain on the tax roll for 2018 as of today.
Planning commission. Okay.
I'd like to make one comment.
Tom Berger.
I would really like to thank the people that took the time to come here tonight because I see a small amount. And it's very important, I live in this community and I think a lot of it, and to see the people that take time and effort to make it and make their comments, no, it's very important. I tried to write almost as quickly as I could the things down and I thought people had concerns over it, and I'm certainly gonna hope that we will try to work in that direction. So thank you for coming.
Any other planning commission? Yes, Ed.
Yeah, I would like to comment too that I appreciate the individuals coming out here and it's important for us as a planning commission to get the feedback because I heard comments that earlier that, you know, we're gonna do what we want to do and that's not really true. We, at the planning commission, we've actually turned down two significant developments over the last six months that required zoning changes, which I think majority of commission thought they were good for the community, but because the residents in those particular areas came out here in large numbers, it reflected upon us to turn down zoning requests because of the residents' opposition to it. So we do listen, you know, we, we're here to listen to the community and we do have a master plan and I do agree with a lot of the comments that, you know, we've deviated as a community from that. I've been on the board just for a few short years, but I think we as a commission now are committed to adhering and following a master plan as we go forward.
Any other?
But as, but as the residents come out and voice their opinion, it does help us to make a decision.
Any other planning commission? If not, I want, okay, Kelly.
Sorry, I have a question. For the last couple of years, I've been getting a lot of feedback from the residents in my area about getting these ordinance clean up. The, the feedback is it keeps slipping through the cracks. I really feel it's important and they keep stressing all these vacant properties under for sale and, you know, woulda, shoulda, doesn't help us if we don't move on. So we appreciate your putting these in and getting approval, the ordinance changed, but I do want to also reiterate, it's been two years. You've asked for this for two years. Simply sitting down and going over the zoning, you know, a lot of uses, is 15 minutes in a meeting to identify and flag some things right away that are problematic and need to be taken off. Everything doesn't have to be done at once, I know economics, that might be great, but in terms of what we're trying to do and preserve, that's not so great. You'd rather take it in a priority zone here and say, right now we have some serious concerns about some uses that could go in on these large scale properties, let's deal with that right now and then let's go to the second tier and let's go to the third tier. But, you know, there's residents in the area who are willing to talk and sit down and go over it, we've got a good group of people, but it helps the township in the whole. And, you know, I'd like to expedite some of these things in terms of special uses and not just in, you know, the ag or the short term, you know, these in the residential building too, really work on some of these uses that you would want to live here on. They're old, like you said, they're from the 60s, so it's just my feedback, I'd like to see some of those.
You know, since I'm running the meeting, I'm gonna have a do-over. I'd like to thank Matt Lonnerstetter for the presentation, I thought, I thought he did a, a great job on that. It was very precise, clear, and again, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And I agree with the comments over here about the public coming here to comment, that's important. We're gonna go to the ZBA. We'll start, Margie?
Nothing.
ZBA?
Other than that, the zoning changes that Matt's, you know, tracked and stuff, it's gonna definitely help.
Yeah.
In updating some of these things in our ordinance, it's gonna help a lot of ongoing issues inside of ZBA, which really makes township more efficient, take a living along on, so putting some money into design ordinance and some of these definitions is really gonna be helpful.
I'm gonna ask the zoning board of appeals if there's a motion to adjourn. Do we have to do the board first?
Will we make a motion to adjourn the township board trustees meeting?
Moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is that a rule or the township board has to go first? I was going to do boom, boom, boom.
You started it.
What's that?
You started it.
You started it.
Who's first and who's second?
Planning commission.
We require no motion, the board adjourned.
Okay, township?
We require no motion, the board adjourned.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.